Like welcome to our, um, November the tenth board meeting on Public Schools Robinson County. Um, we have our invocation by Mr. Fonte Leach. Yeah, he's down there. Get your mic. Hit it again. It's not going off. There you go. All right. I would like to give him Mr. Rose, Mr. Roosevelt Scott, please, please say the prayer invocation for me.
May we pray together this evening. Our heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the measure of health, Lord, that you have sustained each of us in this day. God, that we may take care of the responsibilities of life, Lord, that you have provided and given to all of us. Now, Father, tonight, we ask you, Lord, for the leadership of the Holy Spirit, God, in this board meeting with the public schools of Robinson County. We ask you, God, for favor tonight upon our superintendent and all the board members of the public schools of Robinson County. We ask you, Lord, to find favor with this agenda tonight, God. We pray, God, that everything God has done in this meeting tonight, God, will be a benefit, Lord, to our kids, Lord, to our parents of this county, Lord. And I pray, God, everything be done. We'll give it honor to your name and bring glory into you, to you tonight, Lord. And Father, Lord, tonight, as we come to you, Savior, we ask you, Lord, Father, as we remember Ms. Johnson, Father from the Townsend Elementary School, Lord, who passed away today, we ask you, Lord, to give her family peace tonight. And we ask you, Lord, to let the Holy Spirit of God bring comfort to their hearts, God, as they're making decisions in the days ahead. So, Father, we honor you tonight with this prayer, and God, we ask you to bring peace, joy, and happiness in the lives of everyone here tonight. It's in the name of our Father, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Doctor of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Got a, got a motion made by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Gentry. All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Approving over the minutes open session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, approval of the minutes.
Got a motion by Mr. Lawson to approve, and second by Mr. Brewer. All in favor, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Information out of, excuse, name of the American Houston, Harrison month by Mr. Jessica Horn.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Williamson and Board Members. As you know, November is Native American Heritage Month. This is a time where we celebrate the traditions, culture, and contributions of Native Americans to our world. Several events are going on at the school level, um, as they observe this month. Uh, please take a moment this month, um, to view Dr. Connie Luckler's informational videos on PSRC's Indian Education Facebook page. They are very informative and they are top notch. And to transition, so tomorrow, all PSRC schools and facilities will be closed as we observe Veterans Day. I do want to have a special recognition right now. If you were a, if you are a veteran and you have served, please stand so we can recognize you. Thank you, veterans, for your many sacrifices that have given America the numerous freedoms we enjoy today. Today and every day, we thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Playing Before an Overcrowded, Overflow Crowded by Mr. Lowry.
Superintendent Dr. Williamson and Chairman Simmons. Uh, all of you up front, your board members and cabinet, you have a book in front of you. And the title of it is Playing Before an Overflow Crowd. And, um, while I'm gonna guess many of you are not familiar or wouldn't know why that title is that, I'm gonna just speak briefly on it. This book was written in two thousand and three by Mr. Lou Barton, who is a Lumbee historian. He has passed away, and by Mr. Tim Brayboy. And Mr. Brayboy and I ran into each other three or four weeks ago. And he just asked me, he said, Craig, you reckon the board members have a copy of this book? I said, I doubt it, cause I know when it was written. And he made efforts, and as he's done, has gotten a copy to everybody. And we have a copy of this book in some of our schools, but and Mr. Brayboy has said he will make sure that we get a copy in all of our schools. Uh, this is a history book. Now, it talks about basketball. But if you go in and read this book, you're gonna find a lot of schools that were built, how they got five hundred dollars to buy an acre of land, maybe in the forties to build Piney Grove, or whatever school it was. But this is a history of what was Indian basketball from nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, cause you had different groups that played, and they weren't a part of the Athletic Association with the state. And there was a lot of history that these two fellows thought was gonna be lost. So they put this together. And you will see information throughout the book about basketball teams and about schools and just the general history. Uh, I don't know if any of you remember Pembroke State used to have a, their old gym had a balcony, and the tournament each year was played there. And overflow crowd was there in any school in this county. Gyms at Prospect and Fergrove and Magnolia, I would just mention now, and Indian Education building at Pembroke. You couldn't move in those gyms on Tuesday and Friday night. And what I remember from them was going there in the sixties, not playing, but going there as a little boy to those games. And, uh, it was just a gathering for the community and for those areas. And so they put together, I think, a fantastic book, and, uh, Mr. Brayboy just wanted to make sure that we got a copy to all the board members. And I will do one thing personally. Turn to page twenty-five. I'm sorry. Make it page twenty-nine. Go to twenty-nine. Go to twenty-nine. Now, I'm sure you can see the resemblance of that coach, sir. That's my father, if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Uh, next we have the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program Recognition by Dr. Robert Locklear.
Have Chairman Simmons and Superintendent Williamson along with Board Representative Randy Lawson come forward at this time. Tonight, we're here to recognize the National Blue Ribbon School. The National Blue Ribbon School recognition given by the United States Department of Education is a prestigious recognition given to schools that stand out in educational excellence across the nation. According to the United States Department of Education, the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among students in subgroups that vary. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing an entry or flying overhead is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. Tonight, we recognize East Robinson Primary School as a National Blue Ribbon School. Congratulations to East Robinson Primary School staff for your well-deserved recognition. And if you would, please join me in applauding their hard work and prestigious recognition.
On behalf of me and the board and superintendent, um, your staff, we present this to y'all, um, for doing an excellent job. Um, and we want to keep you there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You got something you want to say?
Well, I can say a little bit. Um, as the, I will say one thing, the Teacher of the Year Kurt Douglas, he mentioned one thing that resonated with me. And he said, I'm standing in this position because of great teachers. So I am the principal. I am, I guess you could say, the face of the school. But at the end of the day, it's because of the teachers and the students and the community who have put me in this position. And I thank every one of you. Uh, it's been a great ride.
Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Chairman Simmons, and Board Members.
Hold up, Mr. I mean, let me do it. Next is gonna be the Lumberton High School National FFA Award by Mr. Herman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You fine.
It seems like it's a national night tonight. So, uh, I think earlier this year, we had, uh, a portion of this same group stood before you for being state winners. And of course, anytime you're a state winner, you push yourself a little harder to go to Nationals and to win at Nationals. So tonight, we'd like to present to you, um, our FFA chapter from Lumberton High School who participated in the National Conference, and they won the National Hall of States. And we're gonna let you, let them explain all of that to you, so you'll know what it was, and the National Premier Chapter Award. At this time, I'm gonna ask that they would come up. And I asked Ms. Grimsley to explain, but she's, uh, passed that off to one of the FFA members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cameron McKinnis from the Lumberton FFA chapter, and I'm currently serving as the chapter president. October twenty-fourth through thirtieth, we attended the ninety-fifth National FFA Convention. And here at this convention, one of the awards we won was the first place premier chapter in the building communities category. For this event, what we had to do was do a presentation on a project, on a service project that we completed last school year. So our service project was a bake sale in which we raised funds in order to purchase bicycles for children in foster care. So myself and a former FFA member, Belle Merle, attended the ninety-fifth National FFA Convention to interview for this and give a presentation on our event to explain what we did and why we did it to our judges. And from there, it was selected as the first place in the nation. And then also the first place Hall of States Award, what we had to do was decorate a booth based on North Carolina. So we chose sweet potatoes because that is a North Carolina commodity. And we decorated a booth, and then it was judged by some more judges, and they selected it as the first place in the nation out of all the other fifty states that participated. So first, I wanna say thank you to our administrators there at Lumberton High School, and thank you to the CTE Director. Thank you to our superintendent, and most importantly, thank you to the school board for allowing us to have this opportunity. Thank you.
I'd like to thank advisors, cause without them, this wouldn't be possible. I am also a product of Lumberton FFA, and one of them, I know for sure, I taught at Lumberton my last year at Lumberton High School. But great group that do great things for the community, and I'm certainly proud of them.
I'm Avi Nolly, and I'm serving as the vice president this year.
I'm Michael Locklear, and I'm the sentinel for this year.
My name's Emily McDaniel, and I am the Lumber River Federation President.
My name is Gavin Merlo, and I am the Lumberton FFA Junior Secretary.
I am Candace Grimsley, and I'm one of the advisors at Lumberton High School.
I am Brooke Staten, and I am also an advisor at Lumberton.
Congratulations to Lumberton High School FFA, but you're not gonna get by without me bragging. My grandson is a proud, was a proud student at East Robinson, so he's in with those amazing students. He has since graduated to Carroll Middle, so congratulations to all of them.
Anyone else? Okay. Next on agenda, agenda is, uh, the Emperor's Update, Mr. Thomas Jones.
Good evening Superintendent Williamson, Board Chairman Simmons, and Board Members. I have the pleasure of providing some good news to you this evening as we enter to the season of Thanksgiving. This past May, we analyzed our K-two end-of-year amplified data. And we saw great growth from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year for all students in grades K-one and two. The newly released EVOS data confirmed our end-of-year data analysis. The data showed that our K-two students in the public schools of Robinson County exceeded expected growth. This indicates there was significant evidence that the students made more growth than expected. So in your board packet, you received this K-two data. Expected growth is measured between plus or minus two. Kindergarten exceeded expected growth with a growth index of seven point nine. First grade exceeded expected growth with a growth index of eleven point six seven. Second grade exceeded, uh, expected growth with a growth index of seven point zero nine, so well above that plus or minus two. As the K-five curriculum supervisor, I am extremely proud of the hard work of our students, our teachers, our administrators, and our community members. Um, this growth is attributed to the diligent attention to student benchmark data to our stu, our teachers providing targeted instruction aligned to student needs and progress monitoring with fidelity. Research shows that our students who are progress monitored at rate show, usually show more growth at the end of the year. This is also a great indicator as our year continues, but the incorporation of the reading foundational skills, the ELO application in grades K-two, which focuses on code-based instruction. In addition to the letters professional development that our teachers are receiving about the science of reading, we expect to see this positive growth continue. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Vayner? Thank you. Uh, next, next up is our Safe School Grant by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening Chairman Simmons, Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. Just wanted, would like to share with you that we received word on October twenty-sixth that our county will receive one million forty-eight, forty-eight thousand dollars in, uh, to help us with our school safety. Uh, along with input from Dr. Guzman and Mr. Teal, we wrote this grant to provide bus radios for all of our buses. Uh, also, we begin to have conversations around, uh, having a uniform keyed access to all of our schools. Uh, so we will spend this money to provide those two products before June thirtieth. These funds are only available for this school year. Any questions?
Has there been any, um, has there been any discussion about maybe acquiring the, um, the technology for parents to be able to track the buses so that they will know, um, when to send their kids out and when they're gonna be home, that sort of thing?
We currently, we currently have APS on all county vehicles, including our buses. That is a new package that just became available this year. So is it, it is our, in our plan.
Uh, are there any thoughts or any plans for future grants for additional school resource officers?
So, uh, we funded our school resource officers this year through low wealth, if I'm not mistaken, this year. Oh, oh, sixty-nine at risk. Uh, these particular funds or this particular grant could be written to fund additional resource officers, but there would have been a match that goes along with that. So we decided to put all of our focus on this particular grant into improving our safety equipment at the schools.
If I could also add, Mr. Gentry, um, with these grants, because they are only for one calendar year, it's difficult for us to include SROs because you certainly don't want to move forward with that hiring process and the equipment that the different municipalities have to purchase without guarantee of funding in the next school year. So that's always been the reason why we don't use those particular funds cause they're only for one year, and you're not guaranteed additional funds at the same level in the, in future school years.
Erica, we did add additional resource officers this year. And as we enter the budget and processes, I intend to address that, Mr. Gentry. How many did we add this year additional?
If I'm not mistaken, it was eight, eight additional officers. So what that does, I'm sorry, Mr. Gentry, but what that does, that allows every campus to have access to their own resource officer. Anyone else? Mr. Lawson?
I'd, I'd just like to say, um, Mr. Bobby, as far as the response of the bus accident on seventy-two east um, and the things that transpired, and I know within about an hour and a half, it was on social media. Um, but all I can ask, um, people to do in Robinson County is to slow down. When they see a yellow bus, they need to be slowing down because I went back and watched it three or four times. And if you see it on there, those kids were probably within ten feet of the bus. And if that car would've came right, it could've killed two of our kids. So all I can do is just ask people to slow down. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you.
Uh, Relay update, Dr. Locklear, Dr. Carr, and Mr. Davis.
Good evening Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and the school board members. This year, our district is continuing our work with relay leverage leadership. Relay leverage leadership is a turnaround transformation model for coaching principals to be instructional leaders so that they can better support teachers using the Get Better Faster Scope and Sequence. We have thirteen relay principal coaches that connect weekly to provide one-on-one coaching and site visits targeting the needs of each individual principal. Now, this year, our focus has been on student culture, observation and feedback, and planning using the data collected from student work samples and walkthroughs to help to inform coaching decisions. Coaching is when a person identifies a gap and shows the needs that are there in order to be fixed in real time. When a gap has been identified, a coach provides real-time feedback by showing what to do and how to execute it. When a player goes into the game, they must have studied the playbook in order to understand what's gonna happen on the field. If I study the playbook, I will run their correct route. If it's a draw, a screen pass, or simply just a run through the hole, I need to know my playbook inside and out and how it's designed so that the other ten people, they'll know, cause they're depending on me. The same goes for lesson plans. Teachers have to annotate them and their needs while studying what is going to occur in their instruction. Where items are placed in the classroom, where to bring up anchor charts, and things of that nature will help timestamp their instruction. We're here to help provide that principal support to in turn help coach the teachers in real time. Principals, teachers, and school leaders use the lesson plan to connect with students using the curriculum standards. The curric, the curriculum is laid out so that teachers do not have to search for curriculum grade level materials. Teachers study the lesson plan just as a player would study a playbook in order to help internalize and execute the lesson effectively. In no way are we attempting to take away teacher creativity. Coaching is valuable for principals. It pushes each person, including the principal coaches, to continue growing as they help develop their own instructional leader toolbox. I provided for you an example of annotated lesson plans from the, from the EL and the Eureka curriculum. Also provided a Get Better Faster Scope and Sequence with that. So this is gonna demonstrate and show these examples of a great work that our teachers and principals are doing in the classroom. Any questions?
Any question?
If I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, the board members, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Patty, if she'll reach out to you next week uh, to get some times that you will be available and free, uh, without district folks being there to go visit a couple of the schools in your district so that you can actually see the new curriculums in practice, see how kids are responding to that and increase vocabulary writing skills. So again, Ms. Patty would reach out, um, gets time from you so we can let principals know that you will be in to take a look, um, at those new curriculums, uh, being taught in the classrooms. And again, uh, without having district folks, um, with you. Can? Thank you. Ma'am, may I ask one other question? Robert, again, let's address the issue of resource materials. Again, just clarify that for employees, the list more now than we've ever had. And we've never said that you could not use resources. We're just saying that we're not gonna use worksheets that's not related to the standards. Will you address that again, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Williamson. Uh, so Chairman, Board Members, so, uh, we have provided our teachers and our instructional leaders at each site with a list of materials and resources that teachers can use. We have, we worked this past Monday making sure all the current materials that we have at the warehouse have, have been distributed to all the sites. So we know that every school, based on our walkthroughs, have an abundance of materials. And, uh, we have already informed our media coordinators to make sure that if they are missing any materials, if they will let myself, Dr. Carr, or Mr. Davis know so that we can get those. Um, and we also reminded our media coordinators to, to work with their colleagues across the district. So if a school is missing a, a certain, uh, material, they can get it from that school who may have extras. So we do have plenty of resources for all of our, uh, students to have access to.
Mr. Curry?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Williamson. And, and I just wanna kind of reiterate what Dr. Williamson said, uh, for everyone. There are additional resources that can be used. And, uh, I'm saying that for the public and from, from what we hear, there's additional resources that can be used. They got to meet the standards and have to be on this list of, you know, what is there that can be used that do meet the standards. So I think there's been miscommunication between different parties, uh, the central office, the schools, as far as what can and cannot be done. And I just wanted to reiterate that, that it is out there and is, is available for use for everybody. Uh, I do wanna ask and make one other comment now about, you know, we've had discussions about what principals are doing as far as workshops they're doing, workshops teachers are doing. We had the issues with. We had the issues with Saturday, not with Saturday, being paid stipends and stipends and coming to these workshops. And I'm going to say or ask, all that's been cleared up. That everybody knows where they're at. And hopefully that it's where we're at now in November, that that's kind of all settled. There's not additional things that would be coming forth. And I'm going to say administrators or teachers, it would be adding to the plate of what they're doing now. Is uh, I'm going to say, is that a safe thing to say?
That is the correct um, response to that. Again, we've been clear to principals and teachers not to do any additional uh, PD. Because what we're doing now with relay, Eureka Square Two, EL curriculum, and LETS, it is more than we can get to really. And so we've asked principals over and over, do not uh, keep teachers at the school with additional in-house PD being cleared.
Thank you.
Let me ask, Dr. Carr, you connected on the call?
Yes, I am.
You want to add anything to uh, the relay update?
Um, just that we've seen some really great things over the last few weeks and all the growth. Um, the schools have made tremendous growth over the last uh, months. Uh, we've seen them um, really starting to implement a lot of these pieces and really jumping in and working together. Um, and I just want to say, commend everybody for all the work they've done over this past three months as we've implemented all these pieces.
Can you, this is following up to what Mr. Craig asked and uh, about additional work to teachers. And this is addressed to Dr. Carr, uh, Dr. Williamson, Mr. Robert, anybody that would answer. Recently, I got a call that there was something addressed called internalization checklist that was sent after it was alleged, after we said, or the superintendent said, no more work. Uh, can somebody explain what that is and the expectations for teachers? I saw I was sent a copy of it, or I saw a copy of it, and it was different things that they're looking for in each lessons. I just need to know for my clarity, that internal checklist, is it to be sent to someone? Is it to be done and sent to the principal as an additional something for teachers to do?
Dr. Carr, you want to address that?
So the checklist is just as a resource to remind teachers of what they should look for as they're annotating their lesson. Um, it is not intended to be submitted. It's just there so that as they're annotating the lesson, they know what should I look for? I should make sure um, which students are going to struggle with certain pieces? How long is it going to take for certain sections? But it should not be an additional piece that somebody has to submit to a principal.
So it's just for them to model through and let me make sure I understand. There would be no expectation for it to be submitted to anyone. It's just for teachers' own internalization thinking and getting things together. No one's going to go in and say, I need your internalization checklist.
No, they should not be asking for the internalizations checklist. That should be a resource for them to help them understand what they need to look for as they're working through internalizing that lesson.
Thank you.
We've had a lot of questions around the exit ticket, if that's graded, non-graded. Can we clarify that? We did send information to all staff and in the update in terms of the exit ticket and the intent of that, which is not to be graded.
It is fuzzy out there now, there.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, so, so there was an email sent to all staff. And um, Dr. Williamson is, is correct. It is not to be graded. It is only supposed to be used in that class participation as they go through their lesson. So they're not supposed to be penalized. Um, it is, it is there to guide them in their instructions so that they understand, the students understand the standards if they've met that. So um, just for clarity, that is correct.
Historically, that would have been homework. And, and so we're in real time now with government that feedback as that lesson move on. And so again, with that conversation this week, our intent is we do not need fifty grades in a grade book to be able to determine where students are. Uh, our class participation, because it's an applied curriculum hands-on, is going to carry more weight than anything else as we move forward.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Chair.
We had a committee, um, excuse me, we had a curriculum committee meeting scheduled. And I know I'm not on the curriculum committee. Is, um, have we discussed our rescheduling that?
At this point, Dr. Emanuel, if I may? Right, at this point, we, we know we're going to reschedule. What we realized because of all the feedback that we were getting is probably we need to spend more time, uh, share this information with you in terms of the scripted lessons and annotation, which is nothing new. Um, we've always, always had that practice in place. The next step again is to ask you as board members to visit some of your schools, to get in the classroom, to see the curriculum in action. And then after that, then hopefully we can come back and reschedule that meeting. So to answer to the question, yes, it is our intent to, to have that curriculum meeting.
So.
Okay, so as far as the curriculum, and we're getting a lot of feedback regarding the timing, are the teachers being timed as they're doing these lessons? And also, could it be clarified? If they're, from what I'm understanding, some teachers are being penalized for going back and helping those children that did not pick up the lesson the first time it was given. So can we just clarify that?
We, we can. Dr. Carr, will you address that? Uh, but we should not be penalized. One of, one of the interests that been in terms of our final outcomes is that we've never covered the total curriculum. So kids were never exposed, we'll be halfway in the year. And, and again, because a teacher was pushing for a hundred percent mastery, which is not possible without spiraling back and doing some work. And, and so we are pacing the time of those lessons. But again, that's just part of, Dr. Carr, you wanted to address that?
So as far as the timers, um, what we have been telling teachers and principals is to use the timer to help you pace yourself, but not as a penalty. So as you're working through the lesson, if you know this section should take about ten minutes, set that timer for ten minutes to help you start learning how to pace yourself through the lesson. Um, there are also certain parts that once you get past that time, you can move on because it'll keep on spiraling. And so, of course, the intent is if a student's not getting that, that they're collecting that data in during small group time, that they can help reteach certain components. Or if it's a whole group need, that they may do it the first few minutes or in that moment to reteach those sections.
Okay, thank you. And I had, just have one additional thing as far, okay. So, and I think that needs to be communicated to the instructional leaders that the teachers are not supposed to be penalized for not, you know, being exactly within the time, timeframe. Um, and also from a parental standpoint, because my child comes home with this lesson at night. We, there needs to be some additional training or some additional information given to the parents. Um, because this is not what we're used to. I'm, I'm an eighties baby, so this is not how I did math. So it's, it's, it's quite difficult to help a child um, obtain a level of clarification when the parents are not clear on what's, what's transpiring.
That is part of, Ms. Freeman, of our conversation with our family engagement, that we would set some of those opportunities, like you've already started the process.
There had been uh, quite a bit of discussion, and, and it's been mentioned already, but I, I want to make sure that I'm clear on it. Uh, with uh, training workshops on Saturday. Is, is there a, now a clear policy about that? Or is, or uh, the instructional uh, powers that be going to take that on a case-by-case basis? Or what, what is the future outlook with that?
Yeah, we will continue our practice. That has always been optional. We, we've never said to anyone, again, I can't speak to what's being said in buildings until I made aware of that. But the Saturday training has always been an option. And when we pull that back, it was clear from the, um, high percentage of our teachers that they wanted that opportunity to get the PD at home in their pajamas, if that's what they chose to do in that climate. And so again, it is optional. We are not, the other part of that is, for instance, with LETS, that's a mandate from the state. We don't have any choice in terms of that. But to answer your question, it's always been optional. We'll continue to be optional. But I want to be clear, we are holding everyone accountable for the training and for the PD. The Saturday part of that, and Erica, we addressed that, allow us to pay stipends, whereas during the week, we cannot pay stipends. And so there's some financial reasons as to why we're, we're doing it that way, but it is optional. Ms. Freeman, do you want to address the family engagement and how we've started that process to Mr. Ocean's question, please?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, um, Brenda Lynn is our family engagement specialist. We also have thirteen parent liaisons that we're working with, with the district through Title I funding. And we have met recently, and we do have plans to work with our parents. We have thought that from the very start when we adopted the new curriculum. I too am a grandmother, and I help my granddaughter in the afternoon. And it is baffling sometimes for me as well. So we have planned to actually, we're working with Cole next week to look at our website to be able to drive our parents to the online resources that are available in Eureka and as well as with EL. And we do have upcoming a, a meeting scheduled where we're going to be reaching out into the community, not expecting always the community to come to us, but us going out into the different regions within the district and working with our parents to help build that capacity. Not only is that a requirement of what the new curriculum, but it is an expectation of a federally funded district, which we are all school-wide Title I.
Thank you for that question and to be able to address that. Also, if I may, I'd like to remind everyone, today is, how many days have we been in school? Forty-some plus days, probably fifty days. So this is a new curriculum, both. And we've only used it for fifty days. So it is not a realistic expectation that mastery is already taking place. We're very sensitive to that. Uh, we're going to be better year two with this new curriculum. Our plans for the summer is that we will identify teachers who are really, really mastering the curriculum, doing an outstanding job. Our plans for this summer would be teachers on teachers, those teachers to work with teachers, and we'll pay them for that time to help them design lessons and use the new curriculum. So again, you know, fifty days into this new curriculum, there are going to be some issues and we all got to learn. And, and we call that a productive struggle. Everybody, every principal, every district person, we're in a productive struggle as we try to turn this district and master new curriculum in terms of what we're teaching. But it'll get better, it'll get better.
You know, Ms. Ms. Ocean, there is a, a parent letter for each module, for each one that will go home. And we'll reiterate that to teachers just to make sure. And that does outline everything that they're doing in each module and what the assignments are. Uh, so we'll make sure that those go out, get those out. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair. I'm glad that everybody's on the same page now in terms of the, um, the Saturday training. I don't think in the past it's been made clear that, that it was, um, optional. My question is, in terms of, um, the curriculum, I'm a big proponent of people's time. And people's time as far as the, the ones that's doing the training and the ones that's receiving the, the training as well. Do we have individuals like doing the same, as far as like the ones that's conducting, like doing the same training over and over and, and over again? Um, you know, if there's a way that we can put that online, you know, to, to save on people's time. And also, when we purchase these uh, various curriculum packages, do, do they typically come with um, some sort of training for the teachers? It seems like that would be like part, part of it, where we wouldn't have to spend too much time, you know, in, in terms of our, our own individuals, sending them out to the schools, you know, conducting that, that sort of training. Is that something that can be done, um, online?
Dr. Carr, you want to address that? The training that we're, that we're undergoing this year, basically is provided by the writers of the curriculum. That was part of the contract to come in and do face-to-face training. Um, so at this point, that's what's going on. It is as we're training our academic coaches and principals as the instructional leaders, and that group of teachers who have really mastered a will by the end of the year. Dr. Carr, you want to address that, but that was part of that contract of face-to-face training.
So in the contract, what we did is the first couple, um, first days of training were directly for teachers. And then what we didn't want to do is pull teachers out of the building all throughout the year. Um, and so what we did is twice a month, either reading or for the math curriculum, there is training for the academic coaches where they're trained so that they can take it back and do it during their professional learning communities. Um, and so they can break it down based on the school's needs. And so we have that cohort of academic coaches that go through that training, including district office staff, so that we can help support the implementation. And that's directly from L. Education and Eureka Square.
And board members, I, I've started the process of sharing that feedback with you again to help us to be prepared when we do have our curriculum meeting. And so hopefully you can get an opportunity to read that feedback in terms of where we are with implementation of both those curriculums. And there's also a new social studies, um, that we're rolling out at, at the same time with that.
Lawson?
I would, I would just want to comment that, um, about three, I think, three weeks ago on Friday, I went by Long Branch, which is my school, and Dr. Locklear, Mr. Ox, and I'm, um, and a teacher were going through a review. And what they had done, they had recorded it, they were going back to look at it and, and help coach her through it. Um, and all I saw was positive. You know, I'm not saying that there's not some negative there, but it, it was positive. And, and the kids, what I saw, were interacting with the teacher as the process was moving forward. And um, she did a really, a really great job. Now, is there going to be some stronger than others? Yes, but I also think that the other ones can be coached up. And we're only fifty days in. Um, I also have a coworker, um, his son goes to Pine Grove. And last night, he just sent me, I think a week or two ago, they were on mortification, and last night it was on division, and said, this is the way they're doing division now. Um, and I kind of got lost for a minute because, um, I didn't do it that way. Um, but I also think there's more than one way to do things. And I, at the bottom of it, um, the answer was right. So that's what I've seen in, in the last three weeks.
And also, I want to say that every board member, you have an invitation if you want to log in on a Saturday. Um, while they're doing this workshop, you're more than welcome to. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Um, district improvement plan by Dr. Carr.
Hi, um, so I wanted to bring to everybody's attention that we posted the district improvement plan um, for uh, the thirty days required recently with the low-performing, um, status. One of the requirements was that we posted the district improvement plan to receive comments from the community. Um, based on the feedback, there are no additional changes being made to the district improvement plan. So at this time, we are going to maintain the district improvement plan as it is. Any questions concerning the district improvement plan?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Carr. Uh, we have the public comments now. Uh, we're going to have one, Ms. Fleming. Action items. Surplus action, auction, individual sale of equipment by Mr. Hugh McQuaid.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Dr. Williamson, Superintendent Board Members. In your package, you had a list of the surplus equipment that the schools or maintenance department and transportation are no longer in need of. And this is equipment that is no longer functional for our needs. I gave you an additional copy or an updated copy on your desk before the meeting. And all it is is where we had to make a couple of changes where maintenance found there was additional. Vacuum cleaners or scrubbers, and I added it to the list. For example, your list has 39 wet, dry vacuum cleaners. There's actually 78. Vacuum cleaners, your list has 47, it's now 303. Also, on the vehicle list, we needed, on your list, the list, we had to take off a bus, 83, 82. So the list I laid on your, at your desk this evening, is the new and updated list. Also, we have copied the contract from Meekins Auction for December 27th, where we could take these items over to the sale for public auction. Mr. Meekins has provided a copy of the contract with a 10% commission rate. And the board, we would need board approval, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grady, to surplus these items as well as to go with the contract with Mr. Meekins. Also in your packet, there were on the very last page where some items were individual sale to, as stated in policy 6560, that is allowed based on the superintendent's approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the surplus auction contract with Meekins Auction Company and the surplus property.
Second. Got you. Let me get you. Second, second by Ms. Ocean. And Mr. Craig had a question.
Mr. Hugh, because of the type, I think, of equipment this is and everything, explain the process about choosing the auction company. Was there any type of bids or what can we do with this to make sure we're clear? I'm sure you did, just so everybody would hear.
Yeah, no, we did not bid this out. Mr. Meekins did approach us about it, but board policy or state policy also says purchase, that if it is a service, that it does not have to be bidded out. And the auction is a service. All the items will be taken to his location or to Meekins Auction's location. So because he provides a service, no different than engineering or surveying or law, we don't have to, as long as it's under certain thresholds, and this falls well below those thresholds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
With these items, is there a minimum bid that we will accept?
No, sir. High bid, whether it's $1 or $100 or on up, it don't matter. A high bid gets it.
Anyone else? Had a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Ms. Ocean. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh. Legal service contract, two years, Dr. Williamson.
Mr. Chairman and members, following our last board meeting, we shared information in terms of that we would ask for contracts from two law firm, Richard Schwartz and Corner Spruill. That did happen, that is in your board package. We asked Melissa to check references, that is also part of your package. The third thing that we said we would do, we'd pull a select group of board members together for any conversation, clarification around the recommendation that we want to make. Again, clearly understand that the attorney works for the board, but it is a cabinet that's going to spend the majority of the time with the attorneys as we try to resolve issues for that. Chairman, members, if you like, I can make the recommendation that we would love to see, and hopefully the board, whatever, is your pleasure.
We had, Mr. Turner had a question, and Mr. Lawson. So we'll do that, then we'll let you make a recommendation. Got a question? Wait a minute, hold on a minute. All right, go ahead, go ahead now.
All right, the legal service contract for two years with the Schultz Law Firm. Schwartz Law Firm.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Lawson for Schwartz Law Firm, second by Mr. Henry. All in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, contract being Mr. Schwartz.
Great, thank you.
Next is the employees' bonus necessary.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and board members. I have presented at everyone's desk tonight the details surrounding an employee bonus that we would like to ask for board approval tonight for all of our employees, classified and certified. And it will be very similar, almost exact, to what we have done the previous two years. The previous two years, we called it an employee stipend for a lot of the additional duties that staff had to do specifically related to COVID protocols. This particular payment, we are referring to as a bonus for our employees, but it has the same parameters. It will be $1,000 for the year, $500 paid in December, and $500 in June for permanent full-time, part-time employees. Again, that's classified and certified, and it'll be prorated for anyone employed less than 100%. The eligibility will follow the same guidelines as our supplement. And the only exception there would be for bus drivers who don't typically qualify for the supplement because they drive less than four hours. Those employees would receive a $200 bonus in December and June, pending their still-in-payment status and all the other guidelines. As I have done before, if this is approved tonight, I will send all of these details out in the financial update to all our staff and answer any questions one-on-one that any of the employees may have directly related to this. The first payment would go out December the 15th, and the second one would be paid in June. We will put that date out earlier, I'm sorry, later on in the school year. And I also wanted to reiterate that this will be the third payment of this type. We paid in the 2021 school year, the first $1,000 went out in June that year at a cost of a little over $3.4 million. We use SRT2 funding for that. We also paid the $1,000 last year, 500 in December and 500 in June. That cost was closer to $3.6 million because of an increase in retirement costs and increase in the number of staff that were eligible. That was also SRT2 funding. And the estimated cost for this payment is $3.8 million, and we'll be using SRT3 funding. We have already received approval from our regional consultant for those funds. So it is just pending board approval to move forward with the process. And we also have paid out close to $3 million in additional stipends that we added for staff because of additional trainings, professional developments, and duties that they have had for a total of $13,686,000. And I can answer any additional questions anyone has at this time.
Okay, let me say this, with some people who don't understand what a classified and certified employees. So you basically saying from the bus driver to the principal, everybody's going to get a bonus.
That's correct. The only exceptions would be substitute employees, substitute teachers, substitute drivers, substitute cafeteria. And it'll be prorated if they're not 100% employed.
Thank you. Ms. Lawson.
Ms. Erica, we've done this practically for the last three years.
This will be the third payment, yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the employee bonus.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Henry and Mr. Craig. Okay, Mr. Henry had a question? Okay, you got, Mr. Craig has a question?
It's just a comment, Ms. Erica. We're doing this bonus. Can you just touch base so nobody don't, K5, don't get confused with this and the letters bonus that will come out? Some of them will get letters payments, I think, in December and in June. This has nothing to do with that, just touch base on that for everyone.
All right, so there's a lot of stipends and different things out there, and I try to use language that makes them separate. So that's why, again, we're calling this one a bonus. This is a bonus, and there's not any other type of training or anything tied to this. Employees will get this strictly for being employed with us, coming to work, and being in paid status on these dates. The letter stipend is completely separate and is not a reference to anything that they would, this would, anyone participating in the letters training would get that stipend on top of this bonus.
And it's just K5?
The letters training is K5, pre-K5.
Pre-K5, okay, thank you.
And if I may add to that, that training is over a two-year period. Every semester, we're going to pay them $500. So they're, over the two-year period, you know, receive $2,000.
Yes, sir.
Hit your mic. Mr. Chair.
Employees have to be in paid status to receive the bonus. And I think I heard this, but I will make sure. Does that include or exclude substitute teachers?
It excludes substitute teachers because substitute teachers by definition are temporary employees. And the first statement, they have to be permanent, full-time, or part-time employees.
You want to add something? Had a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Henry, Mr. Craig. All in favor, saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed, monthly financial report by Ms. Erica.
And I can answer any questions anyone has in reference to the monthly financial report.
Mr. Craig?
No questions, I make a motion to approve the report.
Okay, no other questions? Anybody else have any questions? Motion made by Mr. Craig, second by Mr. Henry, Ms. Ocean. All in favor, saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed, thank you, Mrs.
Thank you.
Lawson. Your take.
And I, before I do this, I'd like to say thank you to all the employees for the public schools of Robinson County. You do a tremendous job. I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County go in a closed session for the purpose of discussing certified and classified personnel North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and 3. Can I have a second?
First, motion made by Mr. Lawson, and second by Mr. Craig. All in favor? All opposed? We're in closed session. We're in closed session.
Make a motion come out of closed session?
Make a motion to come out of closed session.
Got a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Bruin to come out of closed session. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Motion to approve personnel or somebody.
Some of the chairman's chair.
Got motion to approve classified and certified personnel by Mr. Randy and Mr. Ginger, I'm sorry. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Aye as have it. Motion on legal issues. I meant, oh, I'm sorry, minutes. I'm sorry, closed session, minutes. Got a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Leach. All in favor? All opposed? Got a motion by Mr. Lawson to adjourn. Second by Mr. Henry. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, we all adjourned.